Call this meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance. Okay, we start in the meeting. Uh, we've got a couple of people online. We've got no audience here, so I'll not do all of the uh, extra things we normally do. First thing up is the approval of the January fifteen meeting minutes. It looked good to me. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Do I have a motion to approve them? Moved by Doug, second by. Adrian, any other comments? All in favor of saying a five is saying aye. Aye. Okay, we're approved. Legal notices, there were none. Um, continued public hearing, there were none. New public hearing, there are none. So, first item up under other board actions is PB zero nine zero six dash twenty-two Hathaway Corners, Phase two A, partial letter of credit release. We're good to go on that? Everything's good? Okay, anybody have any questions on it? Motion to waive the reading and approve the letter credit release.
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, second by. Doug, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote please. Aye. Okay, next one up is PB's two zero two five dash one zero one zero four Victor Farmington, Volunteer Ambulance Corps, Station Two, Preliminary Site Plan, uh, determining the application is complete. We need it complete so we can put it on the agenda so we can start seeker, so we can get it to the ZBA, get their approval and then back to us for preliminary. Um, any issues with the it being complete? Applicant have anything to say about it?
Uh, I think I'll save any presentation for the future public hearing. We reviewed the uh, the draft resolution and obviously understand it's just a number of procedural items, so thank you.
We'll get her done, get her going forward, then we uh, will get the seeker started. That's a thirty dayer, right? And then we'll do the thirty day on the seeker, eh, no. It'll be a thirty day on the seeker and then we'll get into the preliminary, okay?
Outstanding, thank you.
Alright, so um, do I have a motion to declare this application complete for acceptance and moving forward with a what are we moving forward with? A public meeting on it?
Are you initiating a request for lead agency doing a seeker
Right.
application and uh, scheduling a public hearing for the second meeting in March?
Perfect. Okay. Have a motion to waive the reading and approve that resolution as presented? Moved by Doug, second by. Pam, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote please.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, next item up is discussion on the D- New York State Department of Health, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and Natural Fuel Gas replies to the pending seeker findings and determination for the Alexander Shear Preliminary Subdivision Pla- Application. Where do we want to start with this one? Applicant, is, is uh, someone online want to just kind of give us a little overview on what's going on?
I don't think you have anybody online.
Okay. Then we'll start with staff, let you guys fill us in.
You sent a letter out.
I did. Stirred up the pot.
You did a great job. And as a result of that, the Department of Health got back to you and basically they said this is a realty subdivision under their rules as such. Um, they don't approve raised build systems for the subdivision.
Correct.
So they've got to either reduce the number of lots or figure another alternative design. The Environmental Conservation got back to you because of their new regulations that took a flight, uh, effect the first January.
Correct.
For the jurisdictional reviews. And they're working on those. Uh, the applicant has uh contacted Natural Fuel Gas. Natural Fuel Gas has got back to them. Basically said this android that you need to pull the gas transmission pipe. Uh, you're gonna have to redesign it, relocate it, pay for all the costs. They're redesigning, getting approvals and putting it in.
And then moving.
And, and, and uh, that could affect whether they eliminate those easements blocking the driveways out to County O. Uh, add to that the fact that if we do end up redesigning this project. Uh, County DPW is gonna wanna know where those driveways are and how it affects the site just there that you have. So uh, as of this afternoon, I got a copy of an email from Jason there at Natural Fuel Gas which said that they're waiting on plans, proposals from the applicant as to how they're gonna relocate this android.
Right.
So they can determine what the costs are gonna be and whether or not he's willing willing to pay for those costs. And then he also said that uh, Larry, the engineer for the applicant, said that last Friday, the thirty-first, he had sent Jason three sets of information on all that. I followed up with Jason today saying, did you get this email from uh, Larry, the engineer? And I haven't heard.
Okay.
So um, what we're doing here tonight is just discussing the fact that we have continued at the applicant's request the determination and and findings on this application to the next meeting on the nineteenth. On the nineteenth, we need to make some kind of decision.
Correct.
Wanna talk about that?
Yeah, I'll talk about that at the very end, but yeah, definitely gonna. What I think I'll do since we have no one online for this project, um, what I'm gonna do is lay it all out. Don can make sure that the applicant gets a copy of the minutes, which is laid out in so that they'll understand what our expectations are as we.
Yeah, and I did talk to Jeff here today, the applicant.
Right.
And I basically told him, I said, you know, we've got these decisions, do you really wanna continue with something that you don't know whether you're gonna get approval of or not, or you wanna withdraw? We focus on what needs to be done and resubmit. And he said he wanted to continue. Larry said he was gonna send me a email saying they wanted to extend it. I said, I don't need it till the nineteenth. But uh,
Right.
It'll free the
Okay. Dan?
Yeah, that email did come through uh, late this afternoon. Um, but I
Wanted ninety days.
Ninety days is what they're
They'll put it into May? No, yeah.
Yeah.
Into May.
So, um, at least. Well, that's what he said. The D E C out of Albany is, uh, he means at least ninety days. Um, again, the conversation, and we'll have this tomorrow at P R C, uh, is it better off to pull the application or is it? And, and I think that we're looking for the board's thoughts on that.
Right.
What your guys' recommendations would be. If you're comfortable, keep giving them extensions. Or if you want them to whatever the recommendation would be to either pull it or uh, I, I know that this board has given extensions to some projects in the past. Um, but every sticker says is a little different, so
Right.
I know sometimes you guys don't like giving extensions, so.
Eep. I don't like giving a hundred over and over, but unless there's really good
Right.
reason, which there can be, I get, you know, but.
But yeah, so um, that's, that's where we're at. I mean, they, they definitely have some roadblocks in front of them as Ron has mentioned, so.
Just for the record, I didn't receive anything from Larry after I had something that I needed.
Alright, and I, I think I thought late might have been after you. I don't know.
You're on the email, I got it right in front of me.
I'm looking in my and I don't got it in front of me.
I'm just saying.
Okay, I'm telling you.
R L B plans, so.
Alright, anything else from building?
Nope.
Highway?
Uh, no, I guess not till they come out toward the redesign. I don't really have any comments yet.
Which may change the driveway, whatever. Engineering?
No comments at this time.
Okay. So Ron and I talked about this, Dan and I talked about this today, and we think that there's basically three options for this project, okay? Let me put them in probable order. The first one would be an extension, okay? During that extension, and this is what I want in the record, uh, John, during that extension, we're expecting them to number one, work it out with Natural Fuel Gas, get the relocation of whatever the equipment is, get it approved by Natural Fuel Gas, and make sure everybody knows who's funding what, which I think is the applicant will pay for everything. That's the first part. The second part would be to come up with a plan for a DOH-approved septic system, which is not raised bed or not buried bed because it doesn't perch. I don't know what that is, but they need to come up with a plan for that and have it for us at the end of that extension. And the third part is um, what was the third part? Oh, the, to work it out with D E C, figure out what needs to be done for the new wetland procedures, including if there needs to be delineations and all the other things that go along with it, so that all that's completed within those ninety days. That is our expectation. I don't think I'll ask the board if you have any problem with an extension. Um, this would be their, what, second extension? Um, but we know they have some issues. My biggest concern, obviously, is if you can't come up with a septic system that is not raised bed or not buried, I don't know what it is. Um, I think we're all just spinning our wheels, but that's an applicant's issue. They can do what they want. Um, so those are the three things for the ninety-day extension that I would expect them to understand they need to do. Number two would be for them to um, basically pull the application, go work on it, figure out what needs to be done, if anything, and then come back with something later on. The third one would be for us to just move forward with a POSDEC. And then there's so many ramifications with a POSDEC for the applicant, the cost, everything else, and I think Ron talked to the state and there might even be some cost to the town, which I don't like. So POSDEC is my very, very last thought. So I'm gonna turn to the board and uh, start with Adrian. What are your thoughts?
Um, I'm okay with the extension. Uh, I know in the email it says they only want a sixty-day extension. So I think the ninety is more appropriate, you know, so.
I think so too.
Or in May versus April, what they're saying here in the email.
Yep.
I mean, I think we need, they say the other company needs not, could take off the ninety day or whatever. I'd rather have it out full enough for them to get whatever they need. So they coming back in May. Um, and then at that point, depending where they're at with all this information, they got, maybe they're gonna pull it by then, maybe they won't, but.
I agree.
Probably go after that, but I mean, we, it gives them time to find out what they need right now.
Okay. Doug?
I don't think the ninety's gonna be enough, honestly. Um, yeah, with, with going through the D E C and then also the fact that they may have to coordinate with Army Corps. Army Corps is even further behind the D E C is. Um, I, I can't see ninety days working, but I mean, I.
I tend to agree with that. I'm more concerned with what the hell the solution will be to septic.
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
I, that's the first thing I would address if I was them, figure out if there is possibly a way, and I don't know what it would be. Of course, that's not my area of expertise, so.
If that's available.
Yeah. If there isn't, then yeah, I mean, you know.
I think you gotta step somewhere.
Yeah.
Saying the, the, whatever, J D C or whatever.
Right.
Well, that's
Maybe that'll give more time to the natural fuel line moving and all that, get more ideas than instead of getting some small numbers to regroup, or pull and regroup, I think.
I can't imagine the cost of removing that natural fuel gas equipment. I can't even ima- I can't imagine the cost of engineering at first. And number two, actually, and getting it approved by Natural Fuel and then actually doing the moving, the cost of it, I can't imagine.
Well, that plus the reality of passing that cost on to each of the final number of lots.
Oh, yeah.
You got to use it.
And then that obviously would then add in the issue of the spacing of the driveways. If they changed from where they are right now, they're okay where they are, but if they move them, now we got another thing in the mix, so. Yeah, there's a lot of issues there. But I agree with the D E C stuff. I think that's a long pole in the tent.
But I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, if they want ninety days or
Give ninety.
Two or three more P R C meetings.
It's two.
I mean, I know
Right.
March maybe and maybe part of, maybe April.
Oh, we'll be hopefully seeing them tomorrow too. Right. Right.
Or they may look at, you know, if there's no other alternatives for sewer, I mean, and you have P R C tomorrow, you know, before our next meeting, I would think they could determine, I mean, cause that, that might
That's true.
Push them one way or the other. I mean, if there's no alternatives.
Well, that could push them to the third option and that, or the second option, that is to pull it, you know?
How until you get
So you can figure it out. So.
Something.
Here.
Alright, I agree. I agree all with everybody's comments. Tim?
Yeah, I, I agree with those comments. I, my only question is why are they resisting?
And I, I mean, Ron's talked to them, they don't wanna pull, they think they can do it. Between us, I mean, they, they did, I think, purchase the property, so they own it. So, you know, they have a vested interest in the property, so at least with some funding, so.
They can always resubmit the same thing, right?
Of course, of course. Yeah, well, it certainly would be a fee thing, but it'd be a very small amount of what's gonna cost them to move that equipment and uh, engineer it and figure out what they're gonna do with the sewer. And D E C, that's not gonna be cheap. You know?
Not opposed to the extension.
The extension. But I want them to know, and that's one of the reasons I'm coming tomorrow to P R C, to make sure they understand completely what we discussed. Everybody have any uh, other issues?
Well, you'll, you'll be looking for a resolution to continue it for ninety days from February nineteenth.
Correct.
Or to whatever the next convenient planning board meeting date is.
Yep, I agree with that. And then uh, but we'll, I'll have a discussion hopefully tomorrow at P R C with them, make sure they understand exactly where we are. Okay.
Wanna clarify, Dan showed me where it was hidden in the transmission that
Oh.
he did respond.
Okay.
I followed it.
What happens if the um, you do the ninety days and then say in uh, March he wants to pull it or something, we just have to put it back on our agenda and change
I, I
May date or whatever it would be?
If he's just pulling it, then we'll put it under other board actions and you guys will be notified of that, but that's it.
In case all of a sudden we give them the essential, but then his mind changes, I couldn't remember how that.
Mm-hmm.
Keep in mind that we are continuing the public hearing.
Well, that's, that's what I meant.
We'll have to close, yeah, we'll have to
Set it up and
Pull it up.
Or if a new thing is set a date.
notifies us that he wants to pull it.
Before the ninety.
We'll have to wait until the ninety days.
Oh.
Or re-advertise in the public hearing.
Yeah, okay. That's all administrative, we can handle that. Okay, next item up is the discussion of the proposed amendment to Chapter one forty-four land subdivision. I read it, I didn't have any issues. Anybody have any issues with it? Okay.
On um, the first section there, the, like, the one forty-four A, uh, as an example. There's some sections that look like they changed, others were not changed. So the sections that are not changed still remain in there.
Right, yes.
Alright, I just wanna make sure that was, I was understanding. Um, then under one forty-four dash three A two, it lists all the items that we, you know, water supply. I was thinking we oughta add in electrical and gas service on that, based upon what we have found recently with R G eight.
Yeah.
Um, you know, just
Good idea.
Plus every other utility on here. I thought, you know, up until now, that would've been a great
Yeah, that's excellent.
That's the benefit of having
You guys can take notes on there or whatever, make sure that we get those things. Thanks.
The, uh, the other is just more questions. I was, I just got kinda confused as I was reading through. It's in that section, or, yeah, Section two, Article two, which is the, the entirely new section, it looks like, of the code. Um, you know, where it's talking about the public hearing and all this stuff we've been, you know, doing the changes, basically, but, and, and here, I was getting confused between something accepted, something complete. It seems to like in L, it lists all those five items we have to, you know, have before it's, uh, let's see, is this accepted? No, it's prior to scheduling the public hearing. Under M, it states that should not be considered accepted until the planning board has, you know, made determination on those five items. But then under one forty-four eleven, which is the procedure requirements, you look up acceptance of applications, says the application shall not be determined complete until the lead agency establishes coordinated review. So I, maybe I'm getting confused between complete and accepted.
That language comes right out of New York State Town Law. And it's confusing as all hell.
Okay.
It'll be on my read as to what they, what they're looking for. What we're doing, we're basically saying as the planning board, and we've been doing this now for months.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Uh, we've got all the stuff we need to move this thing forward. We're gonna start the secret process, we're gonna declare it to the lead agents. What they're saying is that can't happen until there is a lead agency.
Right, yeah.
Why waste all that time?
Well, that, that's, I guess, where I was, I guess I was, was reading, and it's just confusing. It's almost like a circular.
Our procedure is accepting it, allowing directing staff what to do. Technically, you're not complete until seeker's complete.
So they're talking about the application. Or not necessarily just, yeah.
Correct.
I just, you know, because of the uh, the terms in there, I was
Right.
Looking at that going, this is
I mean, look at it from Alexander Shear. We accept the information they gave us because it met the minimum.
Yeah.
Okay, we started the secret process. We've gone into the secret process and now we found there's a lot of information that we need.
Yeah.
It's not a complete application at this point in time.
Right.
But it was, you had enough.
Enough to accept it and move it forward, but not
You gotta have some certain
Yeah, so it's, it's just really
Yeah.
It's really, it's really accepted.
Yes. Right.
So
It's all those new words that we have to
Yeah.
Make a big difference, whether it's a meeting or a hearing too.
Well, if you go to New York State Town Law and you read that Article sixteen, there's this combination, that combination, this comma, what if this happens, this happened? It's confusing as all hell.
Oh, yeah.
And when I first saw that, I don't, hmm, that, oh, good. Hey! Oh my, what do you expect?
That one, or that, that, that item, whatever that was, that's just right out of the, the New York State law, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It has to be in there, basically.
Mm-hmm.
Again, saying that you can't process the application until you complete seeker, which has been the standard for ever, forever.
Yeah. I was just saying, the, the way I read it first, I was thinking, oh God, there's another thirty days.
Right.
Permit's off, and then we're the lead agents, now we have to have another meeting, you know, so. Alright, so it basically says how we're doing it now.
Yep. Anybody else have any comments on one forty-four?
I just wanted um, clarification on one thing too. Um, the clerk of the planning board, that that's um, I don't know. Just cause it said that he's the, or like, the clerk, whoever, John or whoever's at that position at any time, does all the newspaper stuff or whatever, so. That was new. You're adding that or whatever, where he puts the paper, stuff in the
Oh, that, that's gonna be, that's John commented on that. He doesn't notify the newspaper.
Yes, we're
Well, that's gotta be removed and
Yeah, well, that's on our list of things too.
Mm-hmm.
Keep in mind, this all went out at the same time to everybody.
Right.
Oh, I know, yeah, but I, I saw it on there and I just maybe John enjoys doing that or something. I don't know if the next clerk would wanna do all that or something, I just thought putting it in there was
I think the old language used to call it, call it the secretary for the planning board.
Yeah, I agree. Anything else on one forty-four? Let's move to one fifteen, short-term rentals. I reviewed it, I thought it was fine, um. I, I mean, I think it's great we get it done and get it in there so that we can uh, I don't know if we've had any issues, but certainly it'll stem off any issues we might have in the future. So anybody have anything with one fifteen?
Um, so, and again, yeah, this is very new, but we're already getting questions on our regulations, which we have to say we don't have any at the moment. Uh, which is never a great thing to say.
Yep.
So the sooner we can get that one in, uh, and then the, the state changed, uh, they requiring to every, all of these to be registered, but they're passing that to the county. So the county's gonna keep the log that they have to be
So all the Airbnbs or whatever? All the short-term rental?
All short-term rentals.
But, well, I did have a quick question.
No, go ahead.
But uh, with this Airbnb, the short-term, and maybe I missed it, but are these being inspected by you guys, like, rental property, I mean, not monthly or anything, but more regularly than
So it
Like rental property would, like
Correct.
And the city can, it would they check them a lot, like, two years.
So it would, it would fall in our two-year cycle, uh, just like every business does, uh, for a short-term rental. And uh, because you need a permit, pretty much, to, it's how the code what we drafted, or is for a permit to be issued. Uh, and the only way we can issue a permit is they have to be registered with I think it's, it still says the state or county now, so we need that information that they're registered there to issue the permit, and then all those rules in there apply, and they get inspected every two years. So.
You ought to have a handout to hand to them, would, these are the rules. Boom, give them to them. They'll deny you ever gave them to them, but at least you'll give them
Well, they have to provide us their rules too of
Right.
And uh, a lot of these, when you go on the websites for the Airbnb, I mean, it's all they're, they're listed there. I mean, this is uh, very easy for them to comply with.
I mean, we gotta start somewhere and then
Yeah.
Years like everything else and, like you said, we don't have anything. They just come in, like, okay, I can do whatever they want.
Right.
That might be good and that might be bad.
Okay, anybody have anything else on one fifteen, short-term rentals? How about the parking lot regulations? I didn't see anything there. I did, in some, somewhere it's in there.
Just a summary, like all the rules.
Yeah.
No overnight sleeping, no
Well, yeah, pretty much just rules. We don't have any down there. I've always got issues when I call the police down there and they're like, well, there's nothing here saying that. They can't do that, so. And then there's always the problem of the state, some of the state people thinks it's state-owned and don't even know it's a town-owned facility, so. Get some signage down there, you know, I haven't really had a lot of issues lately with the flex space. Um, down there. Uh, they've been, you know, I think that we've towed a few things out of there and they kinda get the picture and
Good.
Is there, I just didn't, I don't have the email for dinner, it got locked in something else. Is there, what's that?
It's in with Roz.
Yeah.
But uh, is there some, I mean, there's nothing about like, uh, how long you leave your car there or something.
So I didn't wanna put a time limit on it, you know, I think probably, and when I have the sign made, I'll probably put the highway number there. I'll probably put the highway number there. So, you know, they can call and let me know, hey, we're going to wait for a week or so, we're riding with friends, our car's gonna be there, you know? Just, yeah, there's a number there. But I didn't wanna put a time limit on it, 'cause I know people do that.
Yeah.
But once we notice something's been there for quite some time, then it's.
Maybe then you look at it, I guess.
Yeah. But, all right, I'm good.
Keep the boy with the bus moving it around.
Yeah, yeah, so he's one of them, but.
All right, anybody else have anything on the, uh, commuter lot parking regulations? Okay.
You think, yeah?
All right, we're into open discussions. Ron?
I guess basically, uh, the only thing I wanna point out is, as Adrian did last meeting, the committee has set the draft plan onto the town board at their last meeting. Uh, it's, I believe posted on the website, I just understood it would be.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, it's for your review. I don't know whether the planning board knows or not, but, uh, we received word last week that Tony Di Prima passed away.
No.
And, uh, it has brought everything to a screeching halt over there at Monarch Manor.
Yeah.
And, uh, we're just waiting for some information from Walter or whomever as to what's gonna happen next, because with all this happening, my understanding is that Ernie's wife is part of A and D now.
Right.
And Tony's wife is part of A and D, but yet his son is stepping up, doing a lot of help there.
Did they ever, we never gave them the approval to combine the three lots, for the three phases.
He was gonna come to the town.
That's right, he had to go to the town board for it, right?
In February next week.
Yep.
And he called me, I think last Friday was it?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, late in the afternoon to tell me that Tony had gone to Florida, he developed some kind of respiratory illness, went to the hospital, which, and Florida's the last thing you wanna do. And, uh, he succumbed to a heart attack.
I'll be damned.
So. Everything is up in the air, uh, if you post it as best we can.
Yeah. It happened to a friend of mine, a good friend of mine. He was, he's eighty-one, he was in the urgent care, waiting to get seen, and he had a heart attack. He did live, because they were all there to take care of him, but if you're gonna have a heart attack, well, you might better be there, I guess. This guy was the pitch for health even at eighty-one. But, oh, well, it's crazy stuff.
Anything else, Ron?
Uh, no, not at all.
Okay, Dan?
Uh, just giving you guys a heads up, the town board did approve, uh, new software, uh, for the building department.
Right.
So with that being said, we're in a transition phase here for the next probably a hundred and twenty days of switching from our current software to their new software. Uh, with the new software, uh, there is a module for the planning and zoning, uh, which allows everything to be done in real time. So our hopes is the OneDrive that you guys use now will go away, and you will log into our new software, and you will be able to see everything in real time.
I like that idea.
Yeah, again, we'll still be able to.
I love it.
We'll still be able to print if you need copies or anything like that, but uh, everything will be in one spot so that you can, can see that. Well, we're just starting our, our training, and we had our kickoff meeting today for that. Um, so more to come on how that's all gonna work. Um, we might have to do like a workshop with the board, just so you guys understand where things are and how to look at them. Um, when we get closer, I'll keep you guys informed, but I just want to let you know that is coming. Um, at some point, I'm gonna try to hopefully send out an email before they do it. You might see a welcome to, it's called iWorks, uh, software, um, because we have to set up all the users. Um, won't really do you any good until we do your training, but you might see that email come through. So, that's all I have for tonight.
Oh, now I'm amazed.
So, um, I did have Paul go out there with Keaton, uh, they took some evaluation shots of the current situation. Um, they have reduced their display models, the rear of the property is still in disor- disorganized, uh, but they have been trying to clean it up, so we are working with them. They are aware that they need to get back to that original site plan, uh, because they did, they got denied pretty much for their amendment, so, uh, more to come as we go into spring, is that's when they'll really be some changeovers, so we are monitoring it. Uh, like I said, right now, they're working with us in trying to get things done, and even though it's only small steps, I'll, I'll take that at this moment, and.
There's nothing.
Yeah, so we are definitely working on it, um, so.
Nothing new on paddock's landing and their utilities?
So we have PRC tomorrow, um. Usually, uh, Rob Brenner, the developer, comes in for Farmbrook, and usually he does give us an update about paddock's landing, but it's been pretty much the same update for the last few months. Um, and, and the biggest thing is, is the gas and electric.
Yeah.
Oh, your next meeting? Oh, yes.
Shear, but.
Sorry, yeah, so you would have Shear on for your next meeting, and then obviously we'll have everything that was submitted, uh, for the March meetings, so that you guys can review them and see if they're adequate to move forward. Well, no, you're March, because
That'd be March.
We gotta give out the thirty-day for that. So really, the only thing on the agenda is the Alexander Shear project, as we discussed, and we'll, we know how to draft that resolution now at this point. Unless if they pull it, but, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, so more to come, and we'll, we'll keep adding the loop on that, and we'll, um, draft it as needed on his direction. Um, there is a concept plan coming in front of the PRC tomorrow, uh, for the Loomis Road Industrial Park, uh, that I asked Ed to try to be part of that. Uh, there, there is a prospective buyer that wants to buy the whole park and merge it back to one lot. So, um.
Make sure we know that at some point in the future, a little break, and I got it again.
So, um.
PRC, I mean, I can see them doing it.
But, so, yeah, so they, they, uh, more to come on that project as well. And they are in front of PRC tomorrow, uh, for concept purposes. I know when we first met with them, they have a pretty aggressive, uh, schedule uh, from the actual applicant. Uh, their engineer wasn't so sure if they could make that schedule, but, uh, um, so at least something is coming forth for that lot, and we'll see where it goes.
Is what it is. They are gonna change the, uh, they are gonna change that pond from the middle to somewhere else.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Yeah? Right, right.
So.
Anything else, Paul? Tim?
Um, obviously been out with the snow quite a bit, and now we're dealing with a salt shortage that doesn't seem to be getting any better.
Yeah.
Um, we're not to the point yet where we're desperate, like some other towns that are out of salt. We still have some. I know Gorham, they were calling today to see if they could borrow, get any salt from anybody, so new town stepped up and gave them salt, so he's got some for at least through the weekend. Um, I've been trying to make calls and not having much luck, so.
It's funny, either you're trying not to take a delivery of salt, or you're trying to give more.
Yep, so.
No happy medium.
So right now, we're gonna go into a conservative mode and maybe not salt the subdivisions completely. We'll just scrape them, salt the intersections, so you can stop, and see how long we can make it last, but.
Do what you gotta do.
It's not looking good at this point.
And it doesn't look like it's getting any better either.
No, no, the snow just looks like it keeps coming and coming, so.
Especially with a little ice, that's crazy stuff.
So, yeah, obviously with the ice, I'll have to salt everything. I can't, I can't conserve on that, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Anything from engineering?
Nope.
Anything from the board?
Don't have anything? I don't have anything. I'll work with the, the team when they need me, and, uh, we try to keep things rolling. Uh, I will be going to the PRC tomorrow, make sure that I talk to the guys from Alexander Shear and that new, uh, concept plan. Other than that, I think that's it for me. No public? And, this, I'm sorry, Ron?
I think John sent out today a notice of a series of training programs.
Yes, they sent out, got them out the other day, yeah.
MRB is doing.
Yep, yeah.
And that'd be a good opportunity.
Yes, it is, they're doing ten of.
Because it might be.
Yeah. Anybody online like to say anything? Anybody online like to say anything? Okay, with that, I don't have anything else. Uh, motion adjourned by Adrian, seconded by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.